determines somehow whether the children that did bring weapons or probably gun, if they actually had, if they felt that they were protecting themselves, if they're on offense or if they're on defense of what's going on and if they're on defense, what's going on in the school if they feel like they have to harm themselves to be safe. And the only other thing that I would ask is, I know SCL talks about empathy. And the last board meeting I came to, there was some friction between people in the audience. And I would just ask that we both sides try to have empathy for the other. Because you may not understand my position, you don't understand my background, you don't understand my family's situations, nor do I understand yours. But I would hopefully that one another in our discussions because I do know that the best schools have parent involvement, teacher involvement, school board involvement, and everyone involved for better of the children.
That's right.
Hello, my name is Sabine Lu, and I'm here to talk to you today about Bloomington High School South's response to the recent instances of guns at school. Many students do not feel safe on campus. The school's response to these instances did nothing to improve the safety of the students or the staff. The school's response to what was the second incident of a gun on campus within two weeks of each other was to inform the student body that there were counselors available and to change the hall pass policy. Teachers are now required to sign students in and out of class. This is to limit the number of students in the hall. This response seems tone deaf with the real issue of weapons on campus and rather more in the context, excuse me, of COVID and social distancing. It is out of touch for the school to think that these changes make the campus any safer for the students or the staff. Students are currently discouraged from using lockers and encouraged to carry all of their belongings with them throughout the day. Limiting the number of students in the hallway does not prevent students from carrying weapons from schools, and it will not prevent students from taking those weapons into classes via their backpacks. It does however disrupt the class for the students who are there ready to run. It also further burdens teachers by turning them into gatekeepers of the hallway instead of letting them concentrate on educating the classroom. Implementing these changes proactively before a student is harmed is what parents of Bloomington High School students expect. Some of these changes could be a no backpack policy at school or a clear only backpack policy on campus. We could also instantly institute lockers so students aren't carrying their belongings with them throughout the day. Limiting a student's ability to carry backpacks on campus will limit their ability to carry contraband throughout that campus. These types of precautions are used in schools throughout our country. They are relatively simple and could actually prevent a future instance where guns are carried into school. While I appreciate the need to social distance, I think it's important that we do not ignore the other problems facing our teenagers. Homicide, suicide, and accidents are the leading cause of death for teenagers. Turning a blind eye to multiple guns in school is irresponsible. As a social society, we have made great links to stop the spread of COVID. As a concerned parent, I'm asking for reasonable concessions to address these other real threats for teenagers. Elizabeth Brown.
I'm thankful to be here to be able to speak. I'm going to give you a little bit more of a personal take on things. I am going to reveal something to you. This picture, this is the aftermath of stress, fear, insecurity, uncertainty, uncertainty, feeling so dangerous and caught out not feeling safe. This is a picture of my daughter about noon on October 15th, after she tried to stay at school after the gun incident and was not able to do it. She drove to my work and slept in my office because she was too fearful to go home and be alone. This girl alone with her entire school had to go into lockdown today. This was written October 15th. A child brought a gun into the school today. This is the second kid to bring a gun into Bloomington High School South in just over two weeks. I'm here to tell you that no child should ever have to experience this amount of trauma. No child, no educator should ever feel unsafe or to have to learn how to protect their students from such actions. This is the text message that I, like so many other parents, received from my daughter. Mom, 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 we're going into lockdown. Mom, something is happening in the hallway. Mom, I'm scared. This is my response. You're okay. Listen to your teacher and do exactly what they tell you. Then I sent an immediate next response that said, put your phone on silent. Do you know why I wanted her phone on silent? At this point, I know that my daughter is in lockdown and someone in the school is a threat. I did not want her phone to ring, chime, ring, or anything else. I didn't want her to become the target. I want to know as a parent how this happened. I want to know how these guns are getting into our schools. And I want to know how you intend to prevent this from ever happening again. Our kids, our educators, our school staff, they deserve way better than this. And I'm ready for answers. Thank you.
Elizabeth Brown.
Well, my name is Elizabeth Wood. I'm a parent to a freshman at Bloomington High School. I'm also here to talk about school safety. So I look a little disappointed to see that safety didn't make it on the agenda today. I think while I commend the school for their efforts in the second round, the second incident that we had, we don't feel like there's really a clear plan how we're going to keep our kids safe and how we're going to prevent weapons from coming into the building. In 2013, MCCSC hired their first school resource officer. This is a national-based program when implemented correctly that follows a triad approach that includes law enforcement, education and training, and building relationships with students. In May of this year, these officers were de-armed by the school board. My concern is that we had teachers and school personnel, admin, that approached this threat head-on with no way to protect themselves. And they did that for the sake of our children, to keep our children safe. And I don't feel that that should be their responsibility. And we have officers who are in the building, have the ability to respond, and in that obligation, part of their oath as law enforcement officers was taken from them. We conducted a student survey. Seventy-eight percent of children feel less safe at school than this incident occurred, than both of these incidents occurred. That's seventy-eight percent of the children that we surveyed. To me, one child that feels less safe is a problem. So what we're asking for today, what I'm asking for today is that the school board revisits their decision to de-arm law enforcement, the SRO officers in the school. We're also asking that you consider, at least looking into programs that would put metal detectors into the school. In 2018, on two occasions, the school board made a decision not to accept a state grant that would put additional security into the school. We'd like you to consider that again. In talking with parents, and I quote, "One parent stated, 'All three of my boys have seen kids with guns in the restroom at South.' All of these were different instances." This is outside of the two instances. We already know about where guns were actually located. Another mother said that she had a child that was at a Snapchat indicating where they could purchase a gun and threats were made to her. There was no response issued, and that child was now participating in a different school program because they don't feel safe going to school anymore at South. Our ask is that you really look into opportunities to improve safety long-term and look at this with a prevention lens instead of one that is only reactive. Thank you.
On October 15th, my son was in the hallway by the library next to where the gun incident occurred at Bloomington High School South. He heard someone screaming and screaming lockdown. He panicked and returned to his classroom. He was petrified and was messaging me. Had that been a real gun, he could have died that day. I need you to listen and I need you to feel what my son felt that day. He's fearful of returning to school and still has not returned to school since that incident due to the trauma. No matter what protocol is in place and how well it's followed, it does not prevent incidents like this from happening. The only way to prevent this is for you to listen, for you to feel how my son feels, and for you to try to fix it. Any child can put a gun in their backpack and go to school tomorrow without any barrier other than reactive protocol, and that is a problem that needs to be fixed for my son's sake. Until then, he will not return to school, and that is something that needs to be addressed. You've heard several other people already talking about several different steps that the school board can vote in favor of that can be a preventative action. And that's what we as parents are asking, preventative action, not reactive.
First of all, I would like to thank you for providing a platform for us to communicate directly with you and to the other parents that are watching this. And we have some concerns about our children in the MCCSC school. I know your job is very vast, heavy, and stressful. Thank you for being so mindful in your communication with us during the COVID era, which continues on. You were very communicative with us during that time. What is clearly needed now is increased communication and collaboration with the community about what's to be done to increase the safety of our schools. Yes, I'm still talking about it. An email sitting in my personal email box only recanting the event on 10/15 is the last I've heard from you all. It was stated that students will meet with SROC on Friday to review safety protocols. I would like to know as a parent, you know, what those are, what was outlined, what was discussed, so I can support you at my home. But I have no communication, so I have no idea how to support them. I would also like to know what the consequences are for the perpetrators. And I'm sorry, that is not correct. This led youth and parents involved in the September 30th and October 15th. We are tired, we are anxious. Our children have to attend school, we have to work. Some have a lack of resources. I worry for my friends and community members that work in MCCSC, and they have no immediate protection due to the unarming of the SRO. SRO, because there's only one left, unarmed, untrained. I fully understand that this is a systemic, social, and economic issue. I get that. I've worked on mental health for 10 years. The work on this needs to continue, of course. Also understood is that there is not just one answer to this challenge. At this time, with two incidents of guns in our school, I'm calling for immediate action in terms of metal detectors, wands, rearming of special-trained SROs, and controlled alarmed entries into the building. This would lessen the likelihood of a weapon being brought into school. By no means is it the only means to an end. I would rather have meaningful conversations as to why these things exist rather than brief counseling and addressing trauma that would ensue after a major event. Again, communicate with us, collaborate with us, and the other entities that have interests in this community are children, and we are committed.
Hi there, I'm Ava Sampson, and I'm a community member. I'm very thankful for all the parents that just spoke on the gun and safety issue. I echo everything that they all said 100%. I'm not going to use my time to talk about that. Thankfully, there are other parents that are speaking out about this. I feel 100% the same way. Something needs to be done. A student walking to any high school or middle school right now will go to gun in their backpack and no one would know unless they got it out or the backpack was lost and the teacher picked it up, which is what happened. There was also an incident on the corner around 6:00 PM. After that, another gun on the ground. There was a third incident of a man being handcuffed. I was dropping my outer pocket chair leading. There was peewee football and baseball players yards from this guy on the corner down here, on the corner being jailed handcuffed with a gun on the ground and another woman being handcuffed at 6:00 PM on a school night. So there's clearly violence in our community. I said I was going to talk about this, and here I am. But there is newfound violence and guns and other things in our community. We have shootings over the summer. This has never happened before. Clearly, we don't like this, and the things are changing, and we have to do something about it. And we're not talking about brief counseling. There was also a shooting at Carmel High School in the home trade parking lot. A 16-year-old was shot. I'm sure you've heard about that. We don't want that here. So something needs to be done besides what's been done. Metal detectors, wands, all of that, all in favor of anything that could be done in the school, that's unacceptable. Okay, but really, I wanted to talk about one of the agenda items, goals and priorities of the district. I know that that's already been voted on in terms of the goals, but not so much the action items. You guys are going to discuss later, but I always found, I looked at this before. I never had a chance to really talk about it. But to me, this is a school board, and this is an education. There's not one word about academic excellence on this paper, on equity, diversity, communications, and funding. Okay, communications. I mean, certainly, we need diversity and equity. That's a given, but those are the goals and priorities. That's the focus for the next three years. What about our students? I speak for myself, other parents, other teachers as well in the district. We want, what about fairness, competence, and excellence? What about academic rigor? I mean, I have, one of my children is now in private school. The other one is at South. This says nothing about the loving teachers and their ability and their dedication to their craft and working hard to nurture and educate our kids. This is about curriculum. This is about the direction and the leadership and the limitations. I mean, the children in elementary schools, many of them smart, intelligent kids with involved parents that are educated. Their spelling is ridiculous. There's no spelling test. There's no homework. There's been no textbooks for years or paying textbook fees. Where's the textbooks? Homework, you know, 20, 25 minutes a night. That is not, you know, there's a study that said homework is bad. Homework is not bad. Homework for 20 minutes a night where the parent can be involved and there's a book that they can help the student reinforce what they learned that day. I think back to basic fundamentals in terms of the curriculums needed.
We'd like to thank everyone for the comments tonight. And we're moving on now to the collective bargaining presentation. Dr. Mobley. Thank you. I'll give them a second here to get the presentation up. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, guys.
I know that's under pressure. Thank you.
If anyone's wondering, we are required to have a video. Just maybe we'll notice, so that's why I'm making sure that shows. Some of you may be saying, why does that happen?
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to share with you some of the highlights of our collective bargaining with MCCCE over the last couple of months. I would like to say to MCCSC team as well as the MCEA team members listed here, this collaborative process involves a great deal of time and commitment, not only during the bargaining process, but also in preparation for the process. By state statute, the formal bargaining process cannot begin prior to September 15th. Informal and formal meetings took place weekly, and a tentative agreement was reached on October 12th. I want to share with you some of the priorities of MCCSC during this collective bargaining process. We wanted to ensure there were competitive raises for all certified staff. And it was important to us to raise the starting salary to be more competitive in attracting teachers to the corporation. We also wanted to increase the 401A board contributions for all certified staff by 0.25%, raising that to 2.5% total. And we also felt it was important to increase the 401A board contributions by up to an additional 2.75%, which is 5% total for certified staff in their vesting period. Again, this is to help attract and reward new teachers coming into the corporation that are in their early careers. As you all know, that it's very competitive out there, and we have been able to remain competitive up to this point, and we want to continue to be competitive and attracting new teachers to the corporation. So we're pleased to be able to raise our starting salary for beginning teachers from $40,000 to $43,250 in the first year of the contract. And the top of the salary schedule is over $80,000. And for the 2022-23 school year, the starting salary for a beginning teacher will be $45,500, with the top of the salary scheduled to $80,500. Again, as I mentioned, with the demand for teachers, what it currently is, we really prioritize raising the starting salaries as well as that of our teachers early in their career. While the actual increases to individual teachers varies, the average increase for the 21-22 school year is $2,807. And the average increase for the 22-23 school year is $2,199. And at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Abby Swilker, Assistant Director of Business Operations.
Good evening. Dr. Hazel, President of Board Members. I guess this is where the devils in the details kind of speak. Just wanted to kind of go through a little bit of how the grids work, the salary placement for teachers. There'll be a transition from the current grid to the grid this current year and then in addition, the next year after. So just kind of the demonstration of how that works for a teacher. If I could just kind of get your eyes on compensation levels. We have compensation levels A through S on our current grid so as not to confuse. We used to have numbers 1 through 15, 1 through 16, 1 through 18, and so forth, but we moved it over to letters to hopefully make the eyes move on the grids a little bit easier. If you're a teacher currently making $40,000 of a base salary, that's bachelor's level A, this next year, this current year, rather, you'll be making $43,250. That's an increase of $3,250 to your base salary. All the current placements, if you're on A, you stay on A. B, you stay on B, and so forth. You just move your eyes over and you transition yourself to that next chart over. And as Dr. Mobley mentioned, the average base salary increase is $2,807 to a teacher's base. The transition in, oh, transition to the grid thereafter, the next year, in year two. What we are doing with the 2022-23 grid is we're chopping off the top level. The reasoning for that is to try to get the starting salary, as Dr. Mobley mentioned, as competitive as possible with districts, not only around us locally, but also districts within, certainly Marion County and around the state. State mandate is that this year, all salaries have to be raised to a minimum of $40,000 in the state of Indiana. And we want to try to be as competitive as possible in that reality. Therefore, in this next year, the salaries move from, the way this works animation, you're going to move down a level from 21-22 to 22-23, assuming that's an acceptable evaluation. And then you'll move over a level to the new grid. So someone that was on A this year, moving next year, moves downwards to $45,125 and then over to the new grid at $45,500. That's an $1,875 increase for their transition plus $375 to the new grid or a total of a $2,250 increase for that teacher. That would be still on its own and so forth. You'll see there's levels A through R. Instead of levels A through S, that's because we chopped off one of those levels of that grid. At the top of the salary schedule, individuals that were making $80,125 will move to $80,500, or if you were on masters and level S, moving over to masters and now level R. And they will additionally receive a $625 stipend guaranteeing them $1,000 in minimum compensation total. As Dr. Mobley mentioned, the 401A match, all teachers in the corporation will increase to 2.25%, up from 2.25%. All teachers on levels A through E will receive a match in amount of twice their contribution, up to 5%, which is a really, really good deal. So if you put in two, we give them four. Two and a half, we give them five. If you put in three, we give them five, but not to exceed 5%. Of course, to help with planning of retirement and to really attract our teachers to this corporation. Just a little bit of semantics and just kind of making it up for when this contract goes into effect. There would be potentially a missed period of potential corporation contributions to 401A retroactive to August 20th, 2021. And so for the period of August 20th through December 31st, the MCCSC is going to contribute in one-time amount of $570 for all teachers levels A through E and $80 for all teachers on levels F through S. What this represents is you can't go back in time and say, I'd like to contribute another quarter percent. So we're just going to be in good faith giving all teachers in those levels that match. We thought that was the right thing to do with open enrollment. Starting this next calendar year, we'll then offer teachers an opportunity to be able to reallocate them and rematch. So our certified retro pay is going to occur on December 10th of 2021 for those that are listening and planning on those retro checks to kind of come their way. And, you know, just as Dr. Mobley mentioned, this is a highly collaborative process. We're very, very, very thankful for the MCCCE for that process. And we're just very pleased to be settled that we think to be able to provide a very financially responsible, excellent deal for teachers and accomplishing the goals as we set for.
And I would just like to add that if the board ratified this agreement at the next month's meeting.
And I want to add, just as a reminder that under newer Indiana law, we are required to do a somewhat detailed presentation. The tentative agreement is available or will be available on board docs or continues to be. And then there will be a hearing as well as then, which is required a period of time after this presentation. We don't have it tonight. And then you'll be voting for it in November. And it's not really my place. A lot of times, we allow our MCCCE president with your permission. I mean, I know that there's a hearing portion, but it was such a collaborative process. I think it would be appropriate to allow Paul to make a comment.
Absolutely.
Or Mr. Farmer.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And I appreciate everything that Dr. Mobley and Mr. Swilker just said. And I second what they said about as well, so I don't need to include those. One of the things that, this is my 20-plus years of being on bargaining, so I've done it a lot for the years. And one of the things that makes it such a collaborative process at times is that one of the first things you do is you sit down and try to find the goals. What are the goals of both sides? And when you find those common goals, then it's just a matter of being able to move forward and try to figure out exactly what they're going to be. And I do believe this year, we did that very well. We recognized that we had to bump the bottom up. We had to be more competitive and so on and so forth. We had to do those things. And it was just a matter of where could we fall and where could we come to agree? Bargaining is always a give-and-take process. There are things that administration wanted, and you said we wanted. Either one of us got it. That's just the way things happen sometimes. I do want to, I do, MCC's behalf, I appreciate all the efforts that the administration, Dr. Hazel, his team, and the board, and the things that you've been looking forward to in the future. And.
Thank you. So do we have any comments or questions from the board?
I just have a question, a little bit for myself or for other folks. Is there anyone that could just simply share like the compensation levels? Like I know that there's many, but is there just for those that maybe don't understand what's happening here? Could someone just give like a really brief?
That's fine.
I mean, like the A to S. Yeah, I'm just kind of asking like for someone who doesn't, you know, isn't a teacher or on the school board or someone who lives on the school board. I guess I'm just wondering like, I know it doesn't necessarily equate to years, but it probably is a combination of things. I just.
So, yeah, I can address that. Your your level that you're at depends on where you come into the corporation. And we have another appendix grid in our contract that has stated, we have one, zero, one years of experience, you come in on level A. Two, three years of experience, you come in on level B. And then a four to five, you come in at level C. So already it's kind of not already one to one, a letter means a year of experience. Back in twenty fifteen, we also had another transitionary period where your years of experience did not necessarily equate to a level, they were points at the time. So we also had to kind of try to find a way to make that equate with the compensation level. At the time, we had those numbers, but then that confused so many people because their years of experience was not matching up with the number on the grid, which is why we transitioned to letters. So you can think of the levels in part as being a year of experience, but it's not one to one with your actual years of experience. The way we're transitioning, as was bargaining this year, the current level that you're at, however you got to that level. In year one, you're staying at that level, but but it doesn't mean you're not getting increased compensation. It's quite a generous amount of compensation. You're just at that level as designated by the chart. If there was no chart, we would just simply say your salary this next year is your prior year salary plus, you know, X amount based off of however that chart displays those numbers. In year two, what's interesting is if it was bargaining, we would chop off that top level and move to that amount here. So we're having everybody for a successful evaluation move down the grid. So A goes to B, B goes to C and so forth. It's just that to have a more attractive starting salary for the corporation, we chopped off the first level. So everybody will come in and now that was prior to the second level. To not be as confusing, even though it is kind of confusing, we we opted not to call it levels B through S. We opted to call it levels A through R. For for many reasons, but that that would represent vision on this chart, the top level having that lack.
And I would point, I would add to this, and it's a really good question. If you understand compensation for teachers, you're you're in the one percent because our legislature has made it particularly cumbersome. Years ago, it was just kind of a one through twenty, one through fifteen, one through twenty five, it varied. And it was years of experience. Indiana made it really illegal to to basically define compensation by experience when they started requiring or prohibiting raises to be given to teachers that were quoted ineffective or needs improvement. There's a few exceptions to beginning to. So in their first few years. So there's this interesting dichotomy between years of experience and years of effectiveness. And then different times corporations have 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 moved things over to to new structures and back. And in some cases, in this case, even second year, it's great, everyone's getting the same increment raise. But it's saying we got to stay competitive, but we we estimated about fifty percent of our teachers, I think, Andrew, is that correct? Are transfers. So we know that without being, we need to be beyond competitive and pay the same. So that we, knowing that about half our teachers are transfers of the district. So what I can believe, what we can say is that if you see someone at at letter O, for example, I think O is the fifteenth letter of the output. If you see someone letter O, it means they have at least fifteen years' experience. It's quite possibly they have seventeen or eighteen. If they transfer, they may even have more. But in essence, generally, we're not, we don't move people down. So so there is one way that the the opposite is not true. But if you have a, if you're level O, you've been here at least fifteen years or more. You couldn't have been there less than that. So generally, and it's there, it's difficult to know how many, because in some cases you move three years of experience under one level, so for, so in some cases it's happened, so there's been different times. So it doesn't directly correlate with years of effectiveness. The teachers are pretty well aware, but the nice thing is you maintain, and some districts have gotten rid of this. And I have argued about it, I think Paul and I, we have had a deep conversation about this. But the nice thing about maintaining some sort of salary schedule is it gives you that, teaches that understanding of where their compensation is likely to go. Districts that have gotten rid of this and just say, this is our starting salary, this is our current high salary. And then oftentimes, there's less of a focus, for example, on that higher end amount. And and teachers have difficulty of knowing if they're, where they're going to arrive if they stay for twenty five years or so. So I do think it's great that you maintain the salary schedule. And and M C C S E has also done a nice job of continuing to recognize education. Some districts have gone to one problem. And you continue to incentivize and reward educational experience. There's a limit to how much of a factor that can be. So it's, and there's always one person, not always, if there's one time in a person's career, teacher's career in C C S E, where they can move down and over simultaneously. There can be formulas where they may even permit that you can move down or over the that O. But in our case, we'll see sometimes people will move down and over, so they won't just get the. The new amount is for eighteen hundred and fifty five dollars. And then the amount that's over. So in other words, there's a set amount each time you move down, and then there's another amount when you move over.
Eighteen hundred and seventy five, twelve hundred and fifty dollars. So fifty percent will, your 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 education cannot account for a little fifty percent.
Currently, it's around.
So is it possible then that for for this next year, that a second year teacher and a very new first year teacher can make the same amount?
Possible.
And that's, and and part of, part of that is for multiple reasons, including a law that says that the teacher, certainly, they're not ready to affect it. They're not prohibited to get those. That doesn't happen. Thank you. That was a great question. It is confusing. And and you know, I I give credit to Paul and the M C E A, they spend a lot of time educating their teachers. Not only on, for example, I know in their meetings, so he told me, right? Educated on 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 this new proposal, but also a lot of time particularly working with beginning teachers. Not only the role that even the M C E A plays in advocating for their, for the professional organization, but also understanding complicated things like the salary schedule, as well as the importance of of our four oh one A matches and saving sort of time, if you want to mention, and things like that. So I I think if this is approved, right, there's going to be an additional level of education. The M C E A as well as the administration will work on to further educate our staff on what this means and the additional benefits. Yeah, great question.
Wonderful. Anybody else have any questions? Well, thank you very much, Dr. Marley and Mr. Wilker and Mr. Power. And thanks to everyone who's involved in reaching this agreement. Next, we'll have a presentation for Mr. Fratton, Director of Special Education on the Medicaid reimbursement.
And finally, T this one, this comes back to a conversation we had earlier as the board. I think this group member was asking some questions about what are we currently doing as a district for Medicaid reimbursement or some potential going forward. So it's taken some time to do some in-depth research, but nonetheless, Mr. Fratton's going to talk to you a little bit tonight about that and also inform the public.
Thank you, Dr. Haswell, President, President of the Board. I'm going to talk about some additional financial matters this evening, namely our Medicaid reimbursement. Okay, so in discussing these things, mainly, I want to talk about how school Medicaid reimbursement works in general. Just a regular review. The Medicaid reimbursement that we have received historically. And then our Medicaid reimbursement growth and development that's going to happen over the course of the next couple of years. So most of you know that federal funds cover some, but not all, the costs of services that schools are required to provide with each student's I P. Skip it ahead. So Medicaid may be used by schools to help fund these costs to reimbursement of eligible I P services that are provided. So what you see here are the allowable areas that schools can bill for Medicaid reimbursement. And where for services to be eligible for planning by schools, they must be determined to be medically necessary, documented in the I P, and all claiming must follow specific procedures and guidelines outlined in the Indiana Department of Education's Medicaid bill. Which, if you're curious, is about. So we use the third party vendor called GoClaim to provide a system by which our staff enters their services frequency and duration between. GoClaim also provides our staff with training, consultation, trail for our staff. So what you see here now, that's lit up in blue, are the eligible services that we have historically billed Medicaid. Speech and language services, applied behavior analysis or A D A services and behavioral health services like school social workers. So for some context, this graph here shows our billing reimbursement history over the last five years. You can see that there's some moderate fluctuation in reimbursement dollars that we receive. And there are a variety of regular influencing factors that I'll talk more about in a second. But so you are aware, the big increase from seventeen to eighteen occurred after we began A D A clinic billing, as well as introducing some additional billing strategies to support the efficiency of the whole process. Obviously, all the complications that occurred through COVID in the school year in in twenty twenty impacted our reimbursement rate as well. And you can see that in twenty twenty one, we bounced back a bit, but some lingering COVID challenges and some other related factors still yielded some lower reimbursement rates that we've seen in comparison to the past. So talking a little bit about the factors that influence the reimbursement rate. So one of those things is the number of Medicaid eligible students that we have in our corporation. The number of those students that have Medicaid eligible services documented in their I Ps. And then parent consent that we're able to obtain in order to be able to bill for those Medicaid services. And finally, service provider billing entry into our GoClaim system, as I talked about a little bit. But I want to go back real quick to the parent consent piece for just a moment to explain how that works. So we can't receive any Medicaid reimbursement services that are billed unless the parents provide their written consent specifically for allowing our corporation to do that. So this school year, as part of kind of a revamp of our Medicaid reimbursement plan, we were doing that to maximize our billing potential. Before mentioning the four main points of this plan though, I have to acknowledge and point out that this process of Medicaid reimbursement billing, it takes time and energy of all the staff that are involved, and especially for the staff that are the service providers, like speech language pathologists, occupational therapists, the school social workers. So it's important as as part of our plan that we get to get that in mind. So the main points of this new plan is that we have increased administrative oversight and monitoring of how we're doing the Medicaid billing process. We're increasing service provider training and support to our service providers. We're implementing and communicating written guidelines for each group involved, so they know what to do. And we're scaling up our our billable services where possible. So now, I wanted to share with you briefly where and how we are planning to scale up in regards to services that are being built. So this is the previous diagram that you saw. And what you now see in dark blue, different dark blue are the areas where we intend to scale up and build where we haven't built before. So this is sort of an outline of our growth and development timeline for how we want to roll out our scaling up efforts. So we've even begun here in this fall with providing training to additional service providers. In the spring of twenty twenty two, we'll actually begin billing with O Ts and P Ts or occupational therapists and physical therapists. And we're going to try a trial of A D A therapy billing within our schools. So next fall, in fall twenty twenty two, we're going to introduce a new service provider group. This will be a large group, our school nurses. We'll start off with Title I schools first and then do the rest in another way. So it's been a lot of information and I know it's it's technical. But I wanted to give you an overview this evening of of how we've begun and how we plan to continue to maximize our Medicaid reimbursement potential without throwing all the details of that three hundred and seventeen page Medicaid bill. So in summary, our Medicaid reimbursement plan focuses on using some coordinated systems instead of efforts of of one or two people to facilitate the entire process. It involves targeting our potential through goal setting and then tracking our progress and related potential or or tracking our progress and potential through goal setting. So finally, we all know that the big factor in this is time, and it takes time to get this all done. So we have to acknowledge the commitment that this time takes, the planning that's involved and any time related barriers that take or process. Are there any questions?
Okay, if you can't answer them, I'm having to keep them.
I can answer questions, I'll make sure that I give them away.
Okay, so if you start billing for these new services, does that take away from that student's ability to receive services outside of the school system?
Good question, and the answer is no. In fact, in our education with parents, usually the two questions that we give and we ask them to sign that parent consent form that is a bill Medicaid is, one, they'll either tell us, I don't have Medicaid, so how does this affect you for it? Two, does this affect my Medicaid in any way? And the answer is, our school bill, bill of Medicaid has absolutely nothing to do with outsiders.
And when we contract with service providers to provide some of these services, like we contract with our A D A therapy? How does that work? Are we, we're paying them and then we're asking Medicaid reimburse us, or are we going to ask them?
In that case, where we're contracting with an outside A D A clinic, that we have plenty to bill Medicaid services on our app.
So that reduces our burden a little bit.
That helps offset some costs.
And is there for the higher E I Ps, is there also some assistance coming to secure Medicaid? Or resources for families, I'm hoping they might be able to get Medicaid for their child?
That's part of something that our schools can do through either their special education services, their teacher record or even their social work.
And is that something that the school reaches out to families and let them know that that's a choice, or do they have to ask for it?
Um, I'll have to get back to you.
And I've been perping up to ears of our elected representatives about Medicaid reimbursement rates. They're not great. And trying to also work in questions from mental health too. So I know that ABA and behavioral health services support us over that, but I am very well versed in the adult world and not as much in the member world. So are there other services that aren't listed here that are something that we could potentially, or is it all the expanded under the EBS?
Oh, that goes all under the mental health services. So that would include Medicaid or school social work services.
So Medicaid recently, our legislature recently upfunded funding for mental health funding on the year. So I know that mental health funding has been shifting towards thousands of users because there's more funding available for that. Is that change also occurring for others? Where that funding is being reduced on the mental health side?
Dr. Haswell can tell you like how the impact of Medicaid, this billing process.
I'm just being loud, so I'm not going to speak in.
Just if you're curious, as you mentioned, our Medicaid billing rates, just in this first quarter, which we've been putting in the voice so far, we've seen 400% on the basis of that.
I know the answer a little bit to this because of my wife, but I'm just curious, would you mind sharing for us, for those that are currently billing and for those that will, we will be asking to bill, the practitioners, what kind of things do we have in place to make sure? Because obviously their caseloads are probably pretty high. What do we have in place for them to get that time to do that billing?
Yeah, that's a good question, and why I mentioned earlier about the importance of keeping that in mind as we bring on additional billing and as we continue with the process. One of the big things is time and making sure that we set aside time for them to professionally be able to do this billing. Some of it also has to do with increased training and support that we're providing, which helps them, they receive tips and tricks on how to be a little bit more efficient, how upgrades to the program that we're using, and help them save time. So little things like that.
One of the questions I've had is, looking at this as a cost-benefit analysis, right? So we want to make sure that the return on our time that we spend, right, is a benefit overall. But the idea is that, and the hope is that as we increase the funding through Medicaid reimbursements for our acts, we'll be able to staff up. We'll be able to increase our staff. And we always want to take a look at, there are those rare cases where there's a large amount of work and a small amount of return, and we may find out that it's not in the best interest. But the conversations I've had with Mr. Brad is to make sure we look at that cost-benefit piece. I know a lot of times our legislators, and I think there are other terms to this in your conversation, our legislators will say, "There's money available for that." But the second part of that sentence, the part that comes after the semicolon is, that that money may be such a small amount that it's an amount that's available that isn't worth the labor that you're trying to do it. So we're taking a look at that. I think the long-term goal, and I appreciate the 40% increase, of course, on a bottom line is that if we can increase the funding, we'll have more money to return directly to those services. So we can provide more services, more staffing because of the additional revenue. Their goal here is not to say, "Okay, with that money, then we can spend less out of this pot." It's to try to continue to increase services because we know, even as mentioned in some of my comments there, the needs associated with some of these services are even greater now than they have been in the past.
I was just wondering also, for those that haven't been doing, you know, if you have a occupational therapist that's been with us for 10 years and hasn't done this before, I'm guessing, is that, what kind of things do we have in place to transition those folks that this was never part of their job before?
So one of the things that we've done in our beginning of the year training that we have with all of our service providers is that they participated in that training. You know, our occupational therapists and physical therapists, they have been part of the discussions before in the past. So they're familiar with it, and I'm also continuing to have additional discussions with them so that they make sure that they have all the knowledge and the resources, the energy of that to do this effectively.
I have just, I have a quick question and comment, and then actually a question for y'all. You may or may not know the answer to this, but you mentioned that the pandemic has been having an impact on our Medicaid reimbursements. Is that because students with IEPs are disproportionately choosing the online option?
Didn't think about how that could possibly be, but honestly, one of the biggest factors, you know, with the onset of the pandemic, had to do with our staff's ability to do it, honestly. And figuring out the pandemic, figuring out how to deliver the services. You know, for example, we had two joint pathologists whose group sizes decreased because of, you know, health precautions and everything. So the time they spent delivering services increased, which would, you know, reduce their available time. And you know, my message has been to all the service providers is that our services being delivered to students is not for that. That we always have to make. Billing is important, but services to students is not.
Thank you. My comment was just to say thank you. I knew a little bit about the changes to Medicaid, just enough to ask. And so I appreciate what you said about how much time this takes to go through and make sure that we're maximizing our reimbursements, and I really appreciate that. And then my question is, when I joined the board, I noticed that there was a committee on public health. And I think that maybe that's been sort of, sort of, whoever might have spent time on that before has been now consumed by the CMA, but is there a possibility that we'll go back to having a committee on public health at some point, or is there still one that I'm just not aware of?
Well, I've been on the health committee, and it's a great committee, but it's been meeting less frequently. I think with COVID, it's been, like, is it down to once a year or something? Yeah, so I don't know, we'll have something to add. Well, Lisa, Great House comes and does the facilitating and sharing.
I think that went, one time when I was on it, a few years ago, it was like almost monthly, at least quarterly. And I think you're right, that it meets less often because of COVID.
But it was fabulous. Yeah, excellent. Yeah.
Oh, yeah. I just wanted to let you know that I've had a conversation with a senior in the office about something going down the road. Four wish lists I have, and my fourth item, finding funding for youth mental health services in Medicaid. Because to me, the more we fund, the more we fund our children, and the more services we give them, the less we fund them in the bill. Hopefully.
That's the overall story of investing in education. The more you invest in education, the less you have to spend. You're exactly right. What was the response?
No.
They added to the list. Thank you so much. Anybody else have any other questions? This was a very thorough and very informative presentation. Thank you for your work in that. And for everything you're doing. We'll now hear from Dr. Haswell regarding information requested at last month's meeting on the naming of facilities.
So I just bring back to you, board, if you recall, there was an ongoing conversation regarding a request to name the Tri-North Gymnasium after Coach Body. I've shared that information with you previously in mid-September. At the September meeting, we brought that back to the board for a conversation, and you had some questions. And so we've uploaded to the public documentation the answers to those questions specifically, other policies for naming rights for commemoration of facilities, as well as you had asked, and our principal, thank you for this question, any identification of all the items within their schools that are currently named up for someone, any additional information associated with that. So you have that as well. So there's really two components of this conversation. The first one is a request to name the Tri-North Middle School Gymnasium in honor of Coach Body. And then there is a follow-up request from board members regarding potentially revealing and enhancing that policy based upon some lack of ambiguity that exists within that policy. I see those as independent requests. Of course, I don't know that it would be fair, if you will, to change a policy halfway through a request, but nonetheless, those are the two things before you. And I believe that we provided you with all the information you requested. And now it's again back to being the privilege of the board. And I see you remember Dr. Rose here, who I've had previous meetings with. And I really appreciate the opportunity to get to know him. And I know he made a follow-up phone call again advocating, if I may, I don't want to, advocating for the consideration of naming rights, and I think this body's here as well. So there's clearly lots of community support for that. I think I clarified that to you in correspondence, but not at the last meeting. So I do want to really note that as part of this record. And then again, it's privilege of the board on what you do from here. And again, I would encourage you to keep those two considerations separate. But again, it's, at this point, it's a privilege of the board.
Okay, well, we can open it to discussion. I just want to say before anybody else does, you know, just that the letters were very, very moving that we received from the community about Coach Body. And I know as a parent who's had a couple of her kids go through sports, that the wins are not the things that, I mean, the kids obviously remember that, but it's the impact that the coach has on your life and on helping you become a better person and on being that important figure in your life, like our teachers and other people that work with our kids. So it was very moving to read about that. But and I do appreciate the separate nature of considerations of the coach and the consideration of our policy, which is very vague, I thought, when we looked at it. And we had never looked at it prior to this. So, and thanks for all the work at finding out where things have been named and how and what policies other school districts have in place. So that was my preamble. Does anyone want to add anything? Anybody have anything else to add? So if you don't, I would appreciate like somebody joining me and perhaps helping me draft some kind of resolution for the naming of the gym. And then I think it would be really good for us to put together like another person or two for looking at our policy for the naming of facilities for the future. But I also don't agree with changing it right now at this point, of course. Does anybody have anything you want to say, or does anybody want to join me and help me? You don't have anything here?
For committee members, is that just?
Yeah, I mean, I would like help with drafting a resolution that we could consider next time, and then have the public be able to weigh in on, and then vote in December. So it'd be our normal two-step process there. With the resolution? Okay, what about the naming policy? Anybody want to work on that policy? All right, and then we'll see if April or Jacinda wants to.
Just to see her.
Will you help with the resolutions or?
Sure, yeah, I'll help.
That'd be great. Okay.
How about with both of them, or just the resolution?
I can ask April, we can work this out later, but as long as I have some help with these. Karen, I know you just said that she would help me with the resolution. Yeah, and then maybe we could ask April, what's anyone else's? You don't ever want to move them three, but then she goes with maybe some drafts on policy. And then you bring both of those back. Of course, you do have to, you should allow, if you post a resolution, you can allow the public in. You can allow for some public input. So, sorry, you can allow for some public input in the next meeting, and then, of course, you can treat that approved.
Okay, that's great. I'm just curious, I just want to make sure, I know we're going to revamp the policy, but looking at, I'm trying to find the most recent, 2017. I'm just curious, like in the past, have we created resolutions for these?
The answer is in some cases, yes, in some cases, no, in some cases, there was a board vote, in some cases, there wasn't. I think that goes back to trying to have a uniform practice going forward. I mean, I can't undo this.
So we are kind of tying the two, whether we want to or not. Well, because we're making, we're making a decision to have a resolution that maybe wasn't done in the past, but then we're also, you know what I'm saying? Yeah, I just wonder, since we see all this stuff here, I just, I'm just curious, like, do we have to do a resolution? Or can we motion to move forward with this and deal with the policy?
You can.
We can write nice words. And give the public, yeah, give the public.
If you would like to, of course, if you would like to make a motion to kind of forebuild the formality of that so that it is, and I do think, to Brandon's point, to the board member's shared point, there is, sorry, there is some, you know, there was some urgency in the sense that, I know that, you know, even Robert Dr. Resman, that would mean that this was a conversation that would take place in the spring. And so, so to that, if you wanted to approve that now, and then simply work on clarifying the process going forward so that it is, you know, whatever the board wishes it to be, then you're welcome to do that.
Yeah.
Want to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion, let's see, to, I don't know how we can say it, to vote on naming the Tri-North Gym after Coach Bodie, is that, I don't know, sorry, Bodie.
It's Coach Bodie.
Bodie, Coach Bodie, that's so much energy.
Right? It makes it even easier.
I second.
Okay.
Well, I'm sorry, Jacinda, your camera has to be on for motioning and voting. If you would like to turn it on and then motion.
I'm sitting in the dark, but I second the motion.
Okay, then we'll have a roll call vote.
All right, can you hear me? All right, Patrick Fontas Ward.
Yes.
Jacinda Thompson-Guider?
Yes.
Elizabeth Rue?
Yes.
Randon Scher?
Yes.
Martha Streep?
Yes.
And Anne Cooperman?
Yes.
Okay, well, that's, motion carries fantastic. But we'll still write nice words, and we'll work on our policy.
It won't be a resolution, but what you can, I mean, you can, but then because you voted on it, you could work on it in terms of establishing events to do for the staff at Tri-North to do some sort of a dedication in the future.
That's wonderful.
And then, of course, as a policy, it would take multiple meetings.
Right, right. Okay.
Can I say so?
I was gonna say, can we offer them the opportunity?
Absolutely. Can I say something?
Yes.
Yeah, the microtones is.
I think I did this. We've been working on this for about two or three years. And I don't know how many letters she got to send, but I got them all in the bag. We got a phone call sent to the school, she asked us to stop because there's too much for her. But when you think about, he's still coaching right now as we speak. And all the different kinds of letters that you saw, we have kids overseas playing phones, doctors, on the synagones. I can't even name all the kids and the letters she got, and from the parents.
This is not even.
I just want to say, thank you.
Thank you so much.
And I also want you to know one more thing. And I also want you to know one more thing. Remember Rosekin?
This is Bonnie, this is awfully awkward, but I do need to put your mask on.
I'll do it next time. So thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay. Reverend Rose, would you like to speak? Please, absolutely.
Pastor Rose, Pastor Rose, one of the greatest churches south of heaven, north of hell. I want to start out, I just said two things. I want to say thank you to the board for all of your community service. I want to say I think you've made a great hire with the superintendent. I haven't seen such enthusiasm and hope for the future among the educators and the students and community at the level it is currently. I know it's just early in the game, but thank you, Doc, for what you've brought to the school system already. Very seldom do I get an opportunity to honor and respect a mentor in the community and to show recognition to a living legend in our community. And I just want to say thank you for the vote that was just taken because H. Joe Body has affected so many students throughout the years. And when you have served for 30-plus years and you affected so many students that have carried over into different professions, I just want to say thank you because this is going to be an opportunity to be inclusive in the community and an opportunity for us to work together for the future. So God bless, God keep you have a strong.
Thank you so much. All right, we are now proceeding to the COVID update. Remember?
Do you think this is going to be faster than usual?
Okay.
Good news. I don't have my clicker, it's not going to happen. Thank you so much.
And I didn't offer to say that.
Do I do anything to make this play bigger? Okay, awesome, thank you. Okay, so this is the October report from the COVID Monitoring and Advisory Committee, or as I affectionately call it, the CMAC. These are the board, the committee members, they haven't changed. And like I said, I think this is going to be a bit faster than usual. I'm not sure why our meeting was just as long, but it does seem as though I have fewer updates. These were the, these were the action items that we went over at our meeting. I'm really going to go through each of these in a bit more detail, so I won't spend too much time on them here. First of all, I want, we did spend some time reviewing an FAQ. Board member Rue had asked that we consider making an FAQ with some of the questions we get from a lot of parents in particular, related to the COVID protocols and how health services respond. And our Director of Health Services is Renee Cyc Leather and Kelby Trumbull. I'm going to get that round. Thank you. They worked on this, on this really great document that's about five or six pages long. We read through it quickly and offered some comments, and they're going to incorporate those. It should be on the MCCSC website soon. And then I think it will be hyperlinked from the different schools' webpages. So I think that that will be really helpful. And then we also spent some time talking about testing, and I have a separate slide for that. So the major issues that we addressed were the availability and turnaround of testing, the process of clearing students for return to school, because we know that there had been kind of a bottleneck in availability, which seems to be mostly cleared up. The other thing that sometimes delays students from returning to school is the process of that result getting from the test site to the call center. And then the call center notifies parents that their student has been cleared. And then we got an update on the availability of tests for employees. And at this time, we're not recommending additional onsite testing. But let me go back just quickly to availability and turnaround. I mentioned that this bottleneck seems to have cleared up. The pediatricians' offices are saying that they aren't seeing as many people requesting tests. In addition, the state has opened a test site for PCRs, and that should soon be also offering the rapid antigen test. So the main takeaway from that conversation on availability and turnaround is that the current availability in the community seems to be meeting the demand, which is part of the reason that we're not recommending additional onsite testing at this time. There have also been efforts to expedite the process of clearing students for return to school after they receive a community test. Some things that I want to point out here, if students, if parents, excuse me, use the IU Health Portal, they're able to download those test results and send them themselves to the call center, not to the school. That's to anyone listening, we want to kind of clear that up. In addition, our health services staff are working on Sundays to make sure that students are clear for return to school on Monday. And overall, the report that we received at the committee is that there seems to be less confusion and frustration about this process, particularly from our parents. The update on the availability of tests for employees is that PCR tests are currently available to MCCSC employees at the Wellness Center, and the rapid antigen test will soon be available. These are by appointment tests, some of the community sites you can go to without an appointment. But just for MCCSC employees, you can make an appointment and go to the Wellness Center. Any questions about testing while I'm on this slide? We did have a discussion looking forward. We are anticipating the availability of a vaccine for our younger students. And so one of the things that we just briefly discussed were how vaccinated students are currently treated differently from unvaccinated students, because of course, we do already have a population in the high school where we have a mix of vaccinated and unvaccinated students. The short answer is there's not a lot of difference. They are, if a student is identified as a close contact, if they are able to provide proof of vaccination, they can return without quarantine. We also got an update from the pediatricians' offices and the Health Department that they're sort of ready to go as soon as that vaccine is approved. They're ready to begin offering that. And we also just briefly talked about the opportunity to, we don't provide vaccines. Our staff go in the schools, but public nurses from the Health Department may, similar to the way that they've offered a flu vaccine in the past, we want to be sure that the same consent forms that we use for the vaccine, flu vaccine clinic, would be sent to parents. There may be some additional considerations for this with elementary kids. You know, usually they want their parent with them if they're getting a vaccine. So that's just, there may be additional things, there probably will be additional things that we consider with this, but we wanted to make sure that we sort of had our ducks in a row going forward. Okay, so the thing that, this is sort of awkward in that I'm going to spend the most time on this, but we actually spent very little time on it in the CMAC meeting. So this is somewhat less of a CMAC update than just a general COVID protocols, public health update. We did, we did talk a little bit about HEPA filters. And the board knows that this was sort of instigated by a group of concerned parents who wanted us to consider adding portable air filtration devices that are, that meet the qualifications to be considered HEPA filters to some of our classrooms and other rooms. Okay, so I'm going to tell you sort of what was shared at CMAC and kind of what we know about this so far. The first is that there is evidence that HEPA filters reduce the transmission of COVID-19. We received some of those peer-reviewed articles from our concerned parent group. The CDC, in brief, the CDC has a lot to say about ventilation, but they really do spend most of their time talking about ensuring that your HVAC settings are maximizing ventilation. And I'll describe in a minute the way that we have addressed that. What they say about portable air cleaners is that school districts should consider portable air cleaners that use HEPA filters. So again, I want to address those HVAC settings, and I think we've gone over this before, but it bears repeating in the context of this conversation. So we've already increased our air exchanges per hour, for some reason is abbreviated ACH, to nine times per hour. So as I understand it, and I also want to sort of give the disclaimer that my understanding of filtration engineering is not comprehensive. But as I understand it, this means that the air is fully replaced every nine, or nine times every hour. And in reading about this on my own, it does seem like the recommendations, the highest recommendations I've seen are somewhere between three and five. Okay, or we can say four. Yep, even if we say five, we're exceeding, generally speaking, the highest recommendations for air exchanges per hour. We also upgraded our MERV filters from eight to 13, which is, which is consistent, again, with the recommendations that I've seen from the CDC. And I think it was the Johns Hopkins article that we were sent. So we, Jeff and others have been working frequently with the HVAC consultants. They advised against using portable air cleaners in all of our buildings. I think I tried to describe this last time, it has to do with the way the air flows. I'm not going to try it again. But with the exception that they might be beneficial, they said, in buildings that incorporate wall-mounted units. And so we have eight elementary schools. These are, generally speaking, our older elementary schools. Do you want to correct me on that?
They're not our older elementary schools, they're our older HVAC units. Some of our oldest schools have newer HVAC systems. So they're not the oldest buildings, they're the oldest HVAC.
The oldest HVACs, okay, that's an important distinction, thanks for that. So there are eight schools with older HVAC systems that use the, that incorporate these wall-mounted unit ventilators. And so those are the, per our request, they did identify eight elementary schools that could benefit. In the other ones, they don't recommend it, in these, they say there could be a benefit there. This, we did not have an opportunity to talk about at CMAC, but later Jeff and others pulled some data for us to demonstrate that we're not really seeing a correlation between the buildings that do incorporate these wall-mounted unit ventilators and schools where we're seeing multiple cases in the same classroom. So the point of adding these HEPA filters would be to reduce transmission within the classroom. We're not necessarily seeing a correlation between these eight elementary schools and schools where we're having to shut classrooms. The estimated cost for adding one HEPA filter to every classroom and healthcare office in these eight elementary schools would be between $70,000 and $100,000. And we could use the ESER funds to cover that cost. So as I mentioned, I'm giving this overview, I'm opening this for discussion. I think we have, we could kind of do what we just did, which is to move forward on this with a motion here. We could send this back to the CMAC. Again, we did not consider this thoroughly, so we could ask for their expertise. I'll point out that that group is meeting more quickly than usual because of the Thanksgiving holiday. So we're meeting, I think, in two weeks, right? And then the board will meet in three weeks. So that's an option. There may be other options that we, I guess we could also just say we're not going to do this at this point, too. That that's, this is, I'm sort of tossing the ball to you at this point, at this point.
I would point out that primarily our focus on person-to-person contact trace where they have closed classrooms at the elementary level, this is the secondary level. So really, we're talking about eight elementary buildings, all our secondary buildings have more modern systems. So we're talking about about 14 elementary buildings, we're talking about eight of them. And then the other variable is, you know, you talk about a slice of the cheese. And the other variable is that we are aware that vaccinations are coming. And so we do want to continue to increase mitigation strategies. The question is, where does this compare to the additional mitigation strategy of elementary vaccinations? And you may know more about that in a few weeks as well, so. But again, this is our, and they, and our conversations with our Director of Facilities, Mr. Fina, our HVAC engineers are not, are not recommending this. He's not recommending this. But it is something that some students continue to request. We just really need to get some direction on this order.
Yeah, so I think I have two more slides, and then I'm going to just come back to that. So I just want to point out that some things that we've already put on our agenda for the next meeting, maybe HEPA filters, if you want us to talk about it again. We're also going to look at our current protocols, say that the water fountains should be turned off. We're going to consider that. No, yeah, okay. And we're also going to talk about volunteers. We currently don't allow sort of one-time volunteers into our school buildings, but we did make a change in the protocols for this school year where regular volunteers are allowed back in. I put other as a bullet point on there just to say if there are other protocols that you think we should be considering, and maybe this, this is an open invitation going forward, too. Again, as, as we watch what's happened, what happens with transmission rates, whether they go up and down, up or down, and as we see additional vaccines become available, if there are protocols. I've been sort of an advocate for having a systematic approach to reviewing those protocols, and we might start doing that, too. But that doesn't foreclose the opportunity for you to bring them to us if there's things you want us to look at. So I'll take, let's say I'll take non-HEPA-related questions, and then we can return to that conversation.
Do you think I have a non-HEPA-related question?
Okay.
Yeah, okay, so then I'll open the floor to the conversation about HEPA filters.
Okay, the only thing I would add is it's not related to the conversation, but it is awareness. Someone said, are we having this conversation publicly? We do, we probably should make aware that because of the changes we're making in the number of cycles and the type of filters, so it's harder, our systems are working harder than they were designed to work. So if we have 25 HVAC systems, for example, we should let the public know that these changes are having, we have been told from the CDC that this is a positive step in reducing the spread of COVID, right? Because of the filtration system being approved, but our systems are working much harder. So what that means is the lifespan of these, these pieces of equipment, these HVACs, right, are probably going to maybe halve, there's no idea for sure, but we know they're going to much last, much less longer than they were designed to last, because we're using them in a way that they're not really designed for. And that's, it's, it's, it's water under the bridge. But I do know that there is a fiscal cost to taxpayers, because you're probably going to see your HVAC systems have to be replaced more frequently. And I think that's an important thing to mention, that some of these, I know earlier we talked about return on investment or something. Here we're talking about opportunity costs. There are opportunity costs, I don't think the opportunity costs negate the actions we've taken, but it's important to be aware that those costs are there indirectly, that we're probably replacing our HVAC systems much more frequently in the future.
Is that the same pot of money, though, Jeff? I mean, if we use, no, okay.
It can be, but to be clear, Esra funds, and we have used Esra funds, and this is a Mr. Kenny question. We have used Esra funds and are using Esra funds to replace HVAC systems. That is very clearly delineated in the federal grants. However, the Esra funds must be, it must be spent by 2024. So that means that when an HVAC system goes out in 2025, and we thought it was going to last until 2030, for example, of course, there won't be Esra funds. We would have to, there's different ways to use those. Those are generally replaced with taxpayer-provided funds through tax levies. That could either come from the source of what we consider our operation fund, and we went over that budget last time, or we could raise the tax through, through particular levies. So a geo bond levy, for example. So there are multiple ways to acquire the funds post the termative grant. However, generally, all of them, I would say, come from local property taxes. I'm not the business manager. Mr. Kenny, do you, or Assistant Business Manager, Mr. Torey, do you guys have, either one of you want to comment on that question?
That's a good summary. We've replaced them the same way we always have when it came to, which is geo bonds, new building, in a sense, for operations fund capital.
We don't know when, all right? We just know that our same HVAC engineers do tell us that this is decreasing the lifespan of the machines or devices.
So this is in response to a group of community members, but our, our billing operator. So this is in response to a group of community members, but our our billing operator.
Facilities.
Facilities is not coming to us suggesting that we need to do this, and it's in fact saying that we're doing above what the C B C is requiring in our buildings.
Right. To be clear, he's not recommending against it either. I mean, that that's, I guess that's what I keep coming back to is that nobody's saying we shouldn't do this. So, or or allow it to be, I know the parent group also, you know, suggested possibly they raise the funds. I think that we're, we are reluctant to say that we would only do this in certain buildings or others. We want to make sure that the schools that stand to benefit from these are the school, are the are the schools that get it, not just schools with the sort of most active parents. It's, yeah. I guess, uh, what I would say is that if if my, if if you forced me to decide, uh, if no one here feels strongly about it, I would like to take it back to the C Mac. That's a sure turnaround. I'd like to get their input on it. In a more, in a, in a, in a, in a sort of more thorough way than we did before.
We even know.
No, I've been told they are available. Um, however, the we will not see them. Right now, the estimates. We're not. There's some immediately available. It's coming.
The advantage of, so I think we have to put this to rest. But if we do one more step of having to go back to the C Mac and get that information first, and also the advantage is to have April here.
Right. I think that that's the other thing, is that I think, you know, April it has demonstrated that she has often a better understanding of these types of issues than I do. Um, and so I feel like her absence and the fact that we didn't actually, like, if if we went to the C Mac in two weeks and somebody on there said, I highly recommend that you do this, they're not gonna, I don't think that anyone on that committee is gonna tell us how much to spend on it. But we might decide if someone highly recommends it, that it's worth the cost to us. I can't say today that I feel comfortable saying we definitely shouldn't do it. That that's kind of how I feel.
The last thing I might add is that because this is publicly broadcast, um, some of the parents, some advocates, some of the researchers, people we are aware, they come up with additional evidence, additional solutions, um, additional information that they could share um with with the board members, um, which um could go back to the committee and then also, you you say that a lot, you talk about this, so if there's other people that have solutions that that don't have these obstacles to them or unknowns, then I'm hoping to hear you know. So perhaps this is one last chance, not only to have that conversation with C Mac, but to provide additional evidence that we may be the one unaware.
Absolutely. I, yeah, I I appreciated the email that we got. I I I I read the forty-five-page peer-reviewed article that we got and and, you know, and it pointed us towards some other resources that I found really helpful. Some of the resources that they that they provided actually helped me understand what we, the progress that we have already made so far. And so absolutely, if 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 other people have access to resources, I, speaking for myself, I'll definitely read it.
I'd like to ask that the information about the availability and the quantities being made available at that meeting, too, because that might change the recommendation if we can only get two, and then four months later, we may get the rest. A lot can change in four months.
And also is the, can the director of uh construction facilities and safety, can he be a part of this conversation? We did have in front of the C Mac. Um, yeah, yeah. And 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 even perhaps, I mean, we're all limited. He is much more an expert in this than I am, but we could also ask perhaps you'll remind me, Dr. Hawley, um, for for Mr. Kenny or perhaps one of our HVAC engineers that could answer the question. Great question.
Okay, that, so I'll, I'm I'm gonna volunteer to, um, well, yeah, so, well, maybe I think what I'll do is I'll send you the the, um, just as the attachments, not the email that we got from the parents, but the the information that we sent. And then we can send that out so that everybody on the committee has access to that same information. Thank you.
Okay, and then we can put it to us in the next meeting. Okay, so thank you very much. Yes. Now for our consideration is the consent agenda that includes the following memorandum from the executive on October eighteenth, twenty twenty-one, minutes from the hearing, the regular board meeting. On September twenty eighth, twenty twenty-one, E C A expenditures, uh, financial reports, September twenty twenty-one, appropriation balance report, September twenty twenty-one, register of claims, October twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one, payroll register and payroll claims, September twenty twenty-one, request to declare a surplus and authorized disposal of outdated items. Do I have a motion regarding the approval of the consent agenda? It's been moved by Brandon and seconded by Martha, that we approve the consent agenda as presented. We'll now have a roll call vote. Just send a major camera.
Martha Street?
Yes.
Kathy Pointis War?
Yes.
Elizabeth Brew?
Yes.
Brandon Scher?
Yes.
Jacinda Townsend Gaitas?
Yes.
All right, Erin Cooperman?
Yes.
Next, our consideration on donations. We'd like to thank all of our donors. We've received donations totaling over eight thousand dollars. Do I have a motion to accept the donations?
Second.
I can move by Elizabeth and seconded by Martha that we accept the donations as presented. We'll now have a roll call vote.
Martha Street?
Yes.
Kathy Pointis War?
Yes.
Elizabeth Brew?
Yes.
Brandon Scher?
Yes.
Jacinda Townsend Gaitas?
Yes.
Erin Cooperman?
Yes.
Next, for our consideration is the personnel report. Do I have a motion to approve the personnel report as presented? It's been moved by Brandon and seconded by Martha. That we approve personnel report as presented, Dr. Hawley.
Thank you. I would request that you please accept the personnel report as presented in your packet. Over there are a couple of retirements that I would like to bring to your attention. The first is Mark Conrad, the principal at Rogers Elementary. He will be retiring as of December sixteenth of this year. He's been with the corporation since January of two thousand and seven. And also Kim Williams. She is currently the high ability coordinator. She is also retiring as of December sixteenth, twenty twenty-one, and she has been with the district since nineteen eighty-seven. We wish them well in their retirement.
Thank you very much. Well, we wish them well indeed. Thank you, Dr. Hawley. Well, now everyone. Martha Street?
Yes.
Kathy Pointis War?
Yes.
Elizabeth Brew?
Yes.
Brandon Scher?
Yes.
Jacinda Townsend Gaitas?
Yes.
Erin Cooperman?
Yes.
Next, for our consideration is the pathway to licensure program. Do I have a message, a motion to approve the pathway to licensure program as presented?
They're moved.
Second. It's been moved by Jacinda and seconded by Brandon that we approve the pathway to licensure program as presented, Dr. Hawley.
Thank you for this opportunity to share some highlights of the pathways to teacher licensure program that's proposed tonight. The goals of this program are to address the ongoing shortage of qualified teachers by finding potential teachers within our community to increase the diversity of teachers, as well as to increase the number of bilingual and multilingual teachers in the district. This is in line with the M C C S E board goals and objectives that Dr. Hawley will be speaking to later. This program will provide a cohort of full-time support staff employed as parrot educators, full tuition scholarships as they pursue a teaching license. There will be an application and interview process over the next couple of months. We will be partnering with Ivy Tech Community College and um St. Mary's Woods College. Classes will be mostly online, evening classes. There will be an introductory introductory information session on Monday, November eighth, at four thirty here in the collab, which will also be recorded for those who are unable to attend. Classes will begin in January of two thousand twenty-two, with student teaching in the fall of the two thousand twenty-five, and licensure in January of two thousand twenty-six. Those in the program will commit to teaching in M C C S E for two years. Students will be required to complete the fi- financial aid application, the M A C S A, and the remaining cost for tuition and books will be covered by S R three plus. I ask that you please accept this proposal as presented.
Do you have any comments from the board? I think this is a wonderful opportunity for us to um do what I've been hearing around the state and across the country, which is sort of grow your own teachers. We have definitely, we're all very competitive for teachers, but if we can get the people who are caring um, members of our M C C S E community or nearby, that would be great. So I'm very excited about this. Um, thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, now, a roll call vote? I was just telling Jacinda everything, right?
Pointis War?
Yes.
Elizabeth Brew?
Yes.
Brandon Scher?
Yes.
Jacinda Townsend Gaitas?
Yes.
Erin Cooperman?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Next consideration on the contracts. Do I have a motion to approve the contracts as presented?
It's removed.
It's been moved by Brandon and seconded by Martha that we approve the contracts as presented, Mr. Kenny.
Good evening, President Pointis War, Dr. Hawley, members of the board. There are twelve contracts before you tonight. I recommend approval of the contracts as presented.
Very much. Any comments from the board or questions about those? Okay, thank you, Mr. Kenny. We'll now have a roll call vote. Butcher?
Yes.
Yes.
Elizabeth Brew?
Yeah.
Brandon Scher?
Yes.
Jacinda Townsend Gaitas?
Yes.
Erin Cooperman?
Yes.
Next, for our consideration is the recommendation to adopt the following twenty twenty-two budget resolutions. Resolution twenty twenty-one dash sixteen appropriation and tax rates for the twenty-one, twenty-two budget. Resolution twenty twenty-one dash seventeen, twenty twenty-two capital projects plan, and resolution twenty twenty-one dash eighteen, twenty twenty-two bus replacement plan. Do I have a motion to adopt the twenty twenty-two budget, budget resolutions twenty twenty-one dash sixteen, twenty twenty-one dash seventeen, and twenty twenty-one dash eighteen as presented?
They're moved.
It's been moved by Jacinda and seconded by Martha that we adopt the twenty twenty-two budget, budget resolutions twenty twenty-one dash sixteen, twenty twenty-one dash seventeen, and twenty twenty-one dash eighteen as presented. Mr. Kenny?
Good evening. Before you tonight is the recommendation to approve the resolutions related to the budget, twenty twenty-one dash sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen. As a reminder of the budget process, we presented the budget to the board at the August twenty-fourth board meeting. We held a public hearing on the budget at the September twenty-eighth board meeting, and tonight we are recommending adoption of the twenty twenty-two budget, the twenty twenty-two capital projects plan, and the twenty twenty-two school bus replacement plan. After adoption of the twenty twenty-two budget, we have until November eighth to upload the budget into the state's gateway online portal. The Department of Local Government, Government Finance will certify our budget towards the end of the calendar year, no later than December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. Okay, I would be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Do you have any questions about that? All right, we'll have our roll call vote.
Martha Street?
Yes.
Kathy Pointis War?
Yes.
Elizabeth Brew?
Yes.
Brandon Scher?
Yes.
Jacinda Townsend Gaitas?
Yes.
Erin Cooperman?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next, for our consideration is resolution twenty twenty-one dash nineteen, budget reduction. Do I have a motion to adopt uh resolution twenty twenty-one dash nineteen as presented?
It's removed.
They're seconded. It's been moved by Brandon and seconded by Martha that we adopt resolution twenty twenty-one dash nineteen as presented. Mr. Kenny?
Good evening. Resolution twenty twenty-one dash nineteen budget reduction gives the M C C S E business office one additional process for managing our budget throughout the year. Traditionally, the state of Indiana to the Department of Local Government Finance has reduced our budget after we submitted in Gateway. For the past few years, we've done an additional appropriation to have our full budget restored. This resolution allows the business office to reduce our twenty twenty-one budget at the end of this year. Though by reducing or possibly eliminating the additional appropriation, we would need to do this coming January. I recommend approval of this resolution. Thank you.
Any questions or comments from the board about that? We'll have a roll call vote.
Martha Street?
Yes.
Kathy Pointis War?
Yes.
Elizabeth Brew?
Yes.
Brandon Scher?
Yes.
Jacinda Townsend Gaitas?
Yes.
Erin Cooperman?
Yes.
Wonderful. Motion carries. Next, for our consideration are the school calendars. Do I have a motion to approve the school calendars and Juneteenth holiday as presented?
It's removed. Oh, second.
It's been moved by Brandon and seconded by Elizabeth. Was it the other way around? Was it the other way around? It was by Elizabeth and seconded by Brandon, um, that we approve the calendars and holiday as presented, Dr. Hawley.
Uh, yes, what you have before you are calendars for the following, um, succeeding three years, as well as the recommendation to begin recognizing the Juneteenth federal holiday that was formally um created by uh executive action of President Biden, and uh special thanks to M C E A for their review and feedback, as well as those who, especially Mr. Drew, worked to create the calendars with the understanding that many of our families have asked, number one, we've tried it all of the I U calendars as closely as possible, and number two, that we give some advanced notification and multiple-year calendars. So are the calendars as well as the associated holiday are before you, and I recommend approval.
Any comments from the board, questions? Thank you, Dr. Hawley. We'll have a roll call vote.
Martha Street?
Yes.
Kathy Pointis War?
Yes.
Elizabeth Brew?
Yes.
Brandon Scher?
Yes.
Jacinda Townsend Gaitas?
Yes.
Erin Cooperman?
Yes.
Next, for our consideration are the board planning goals. Do I, is that wrong?
I was getting ready to talk. I forgot my question. Sorry.
I'm following strict.
I know you are. I'm, I'm, I'm not.
Do I have a motion to approve the board planning goals as presented? They're seconded. They're moved by Elizabeth and seconded by Martha that we approve the board planning goals as presented.
Again, thank you throughout this process. What we're beginning to create is a strategic plan for the next three and a half years. We formally adopted the priorities, uh, people's equity, diversity, communication, and funding. Now we're coming into what we kind of um called the targeted objectives, which are also goals. And we share those online, and I won't read those, but they are important. And then we've had conversations regarding these. And you'll see in there, there's specific focus within equity on increasing access and options for students, on lots of relevant learning for our staff, but also the focus specifically on accelerated learning. That or accelerate learning gets us some of the concerns that we've hear about making sure that we have high achievement, that we have programs that are targeted for every individual student. Um, and specifically adopting a goal related to that. We also talk about um the importance of equity through our COVID health impacts and addressing those. Um, within diversity, we talked a little bit earlier about recruiting, hiring, retaining a diverse staff. It more closely reflects our student population, also looking at disciplinary disparities between student populations. Of course, we want to continue to improve communication. We have a specific goal for that. Um, enabling a robust um communication plan that is efficient, effective. And then there's funding goals. We want to make sure we can increase funding through local sources, through community-approved initiatives, and make sure that our expendables are are sustainable in what we're doing to enhance our our educational program for students. So we're really excited about this, and we'll continue to bring these back, have conversations, and move towards some specific um action items, right? That really get at the heart of what we are going to do as an organization. But I thank the board for the input. I thank the community for input, and through lots of qualitative data as well as quantitative data. And most importantly, you created really a three-and-a-half-year strategic plan. I think the frustration um for oftentimes for for our our employees was not knowing with clarity what we expect, what our goals are. And tonight, you're formalizing that process to make sure we're all moving in the same direction systematically, but also respecting and and showing autonomy for the uniqueness that exists in our individual buildings. So I thank you, and tonight I ask you to approve the goals and priorities before you.
Any comments from the board?
I just want to say thank you. I think that the um amount of time that we spent collecting data pales in comparison to the amount of time that that you and your team spend collecting data. And and I think this goes from the administration to teachers' good families. And um I think, I think the end result is is really good. And I think the credit for that comes to the people who spent so much time on this.
I would just say thanks that in a, in a Yeah, I'd just say thanks, uh, in, in advance for all the work that everybody, and we have the easy part. So thank you for all those that are gonna have to do that. And at the end of our, our press release, we have the now, now the heavy work begins, right? And from the very beginning, board members have said, and we really want to have some clarity in the direction we want to be as an organization, where we want to go. And I think this is a result of those requests. Um, and they, you'll hear throughout, you'll read throughout this, um, various input from parents, from, from staff, and family members, but the overarching drive for this is the board's request to have some sort of strategic planning goals and priorities for a diary. And this is what we're for. This is the culmination of really six months of those conversations. So it, it is, it, it takes a, a long time to do it, and you write about feedback and work from people. But in the end, I think it will help us reach our goals more frequently because we're more targeted. Yes.
Thank you. Anybody else? Well, thank you. Thank you very much, Dr. Haswell. We'll have a roll call vote. Martha Street? Yes. Kathy Pointis War? Yes. Elizabeth Brew? Yes. Brandon Scher? Yes. Just send it to Tom and Gaitus?
Yes.
Erin Cooperman?
Yes.
Uh, Dr. Haswell, do you have any updates on the writers?
No, this is the placeholder we'll use when we begin to bring details on goals and priorities. And some of the other items we put up in the information part of the site, so I have nothing further on those items.
All right.
I know you didn't.
I think so. Uh, now, any comments or, um, any committee reports from anybody on the board?
Uh, the foundation's online auction, starting in November, I think, I think next four meetings is where that auction starts. So we'll hear about more of these, but our donations are being accepted for that auction.
I just wanted to again say thank you to all the teachers and staff and administrators that are working with our kids. I know last year we got into the practice of thanking them all the time because of the hard work, but they're still in it in, in lots of ways. So I just want to thank them and know that we appreciate them, we care about them. Everyone who's working with their kids, my kids, these kids, thank you so much for, for, uh, using your passion and your gifts and your skills and abilities to shape this generation in a season that's really hard. So thank you.
I, I have just one, well, two, sorry. Uh, I, I just wanted to add, you know, in the report from the C Mac, I said that, um, we will consider protocols when they're brought to us, and I just kind of want to, like, to piggyback off of what Brandon said. Remind people that Paul Farmer is on our committee, and if there are things that teachers want us to look at, they should bring those to Paul and bring them to the committee. Um, then my question was, uh, could we at the, at our, maybe not the next meeting, but, but in the next few meetings, could we get a report? I know there are things that are being looked at in terms of school safety. Could we get a report on that at, at one of our meetings in the not too distant future?
Okay, and, and with, with the, with the mindfulness that many of the things, um, that you'll want to know are, um, are protected, um, because sharing the blue breakfast will save you. I will tell you that, and what we'll talk about the process more than some of the nuanced specifics. And the reason is, the process of how we carry our ID review at a district level, as well as within the buildings, uh, in terms of how to continue, uh, progress and research and make improvements. Um, but oftentimes, um, really our school safety plans are, um, not, are, um, good records. Um, there's a reason for that. So, um, we'll probably focus more on the process, what we do for the review, um, than, than insider, when I, um, people can go, oh, this is a meeting where we're going to go to talk about the, the nuanced specifics of what we're doing. But we'd be glad to talk about the process that goes on to, to make, uh, increasing, improving our efforts to keep our students in fact safe.
That'd be great. Thanks. I, I, that makes sense to me, and it would help me to understand the process.
And it's, it's better to have that, it's good to have that conversation now, um, so that there isn't, uh, an expectation that that we'll go over some of the specific plans. But we do take it, I think the most important part of that conversation we'll have is just how seriously, um, I find that our administrators take it, um, as well as our teachers and staff, um, and it's also, but, and it's, um, it's an important part of the work, and I do find having those conversations.
Thank you.
And I just want to say, um, thinking back on what Brandon said about, and all the thanks to the teachers and everyone, but I also want to thank Kenny, because we did hear back in our C Mac committee that the tone is getting better, like you said, and, and the people are being kind. And I think that, that that is so important, because when I was at the, the Indiana Schoolwork Association conference, that so many people are dealing with really angry, loud, rude, unforgiving members of their public or their own school community that are not giving their people grace. And even when we disagree, a lot of people have been very, very polite just as a whole. And we've had very polite letters and exchanges, and, um, and everybody, it, it seems to be really mindful of the fact that our teachers and all the people that are working with our kids are doing the very best that they can, and doing a really good job. And our, uh, my son was in the school that had the two incidents, and I just want to thank the teachers because they did reach out. We've had multiple teachers say, are you okay? It's, it's like checking in with the students, and so I just want to be grateful because it's such a burdensome year to have this extra heavy, heavy, heavy weight is a lot. So thanks for, and for the grace of your show.
First of all, I just want to, I'm pleased to announce that, um, there, we have received an Equity Innovator Honorable Mention Rising Star recognition that's from the Midwest Equity Assistance Center. They annually acknowledge districts and corporations who are engaging in systemic equity efforts focused on changing outcomes and opportunities for students. Rising Star is awarded to districts who are encouraging equity work, um, at the district and building levels. And MCCSC has been recognized for our work, um, for striving for long-term sustainable transformative change towards equitable education, if you don't want to stop mine. Um, so it's really exciting that we have this here for everyone to see and the award that we received. And special thanks to, I know, Dr. Winston and your office, the equity team, um, and all the work that goes on so that we can receive this recognition. And more important than the recognition is the important work that's taking place every day, um, in order for us to get this. So, um, you know, I have to point that out here. It's such an important recognition, but more important than the work we do. So, Dr. Winston, please relay our appreciation to the staff that works continuously to do that, um, to get better. Also, um, October is National Principals Month, so that, um, of course, we want to thank, uh, our principals and our administrators who work diligently every day to assist students and families and staff. Um, if you have not thanked your school administrators, uh, this is the week to do it before the month is over. I know that we have a, a, a meeting, uh, a brief meeting with them tomorrow, and part of that, we will be, uh, thanking them. So, um, also Bloomington High School, um, North Choirs, uh, they're having their fall concert tonight at seven. So we, um, we appreciate the work that goes on there, and I know Board members who realize her regrets. She has a daughter who's performing. And it was right in the middle of this, and so I, I know she sends her regrets when I'm dating you. But we do want to, uh, congratulate the students and staff for all of these performances that take place, uh, continuously. As a reminder, November second is an interest day for teachers and students who have the day off. Um, November eleventh, we had a question about Veterans Day, and what we do is each individual school, they honor in their own unique way those who served with COVID-nineteen restrictions. Um, neither events are virtual, and they're unique. So if you have questions about, uh, what we're doing, um, to, to, to discuss, uh, and so, uh, and recognize veterans, uh, contact your building principal or your teacher. They have more information. Um, of course, our next meeting is November sixteenth. And of course, Paul, I've already thanked you. A special thanks this time particularly for the collaborative process by which, um, the administration and, and, and MCA reached, um, a tentative agreement, or I guess a tentative until the board votes November sixteenth. But it's, it's definitely, uh, impressive the way you came together, brought your, you mentioned this prior concern, brought your wish list, um, looked at the money available, and really made decisions that were in the best interest of, of the teachers in the district, and ultimately benefits our students. So thank you. Without a closer comments.
Wonderful. So our business for tonight is completed. Our next regularly scheduled board meeting will be held Tuesday, November sixteenth, nine twenty-one. There.